All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM. It is Monday, November 21st, 2022, and this is the Rockford Area Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. We'll start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All right, moving on to Board Roll Call. Brady Anderson.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Jenny Nealon.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Beth Prescott.
Here.
Amy Edwards. Here we have full quorum of the board. With that, I would move into our next agenda item, which is approval of tonight's agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda as presented in the Board Packet.
I have a first by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Prescott. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Agenda carries unanimously. Next, moving on to item number three, which is our public comment section. As per standard and routine, I will read the instructions related to public comment. Public comment at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the Rockford Area School District to address the school board. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves or the group they represent if any. To ensure that all individuals have a chance to speak, speakers will be limited to one three-minute presentation. The public comment portion of the regular school board meeting is not a time to debate and issue, rather, for the board to hear comments from community members. It is important to remember that the board has a legal responsibility to protect the rights to privacy and due process for all employees and students. This means that both district policy and the Minnesota law prohibit public disclosure of matters that involve private data about students or employees, even without naming the student or employee in open session. This prohibition includes a public comment portion of the school board meeting. The board respects and values input on matters of concern, but when they involve complaints about particular students or employees, such input must be heard and addressed by the appropriate personnel, such as building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. With that, I will look up to see if we have any requests for public comment that has been submitted, not been submitted. All right. At this point in time, then, public comment portion of our board meeting is closed. Moving on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion regarding our consent agenda this evening.
Eric Gordy. Motion to approve Consent Agenda as Presented.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Nealon. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment related to the consent agenda? Pending no further comment or discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Next, moving on to item number five A, which is our celebration, Rockford Community Education. And I'll call upon our Director of Community Ed, Melissa Joseph.
And I have some gymnasts on the way, so...
Never mind. It's a carryover.
So today, in order to celebrate, so we have, you know, several parts of community education, but today I wanted to look at two of our larger programs, which is our Galaxy program, our childcare program, and also look at gymnastics. So, like I said, there's some gymnasts coming down from the gym soon, so maybe we could...
They're right there.
Oh, they are here?
I was saying, I know they're going down. See, they might be on the...
They might be. I don't know, come in on their hands or something. I'm not sure. Maybe, but I can't...
They're out there.
Yeah.
I got them.
So, Community Ed Gymnastics has been around for a long time, and we have grown the program very, very large. And these are all Mega, which is our... our competing gymnastics team. So, we're going to have them introduce themselves. This is our coach, Coach Avery. So, for anyone who doesn't know, Coach Avery Schroed. She's been an awesome addition to our gymnastics program, and I'm sure the girls will tell you how great she is as well. But, you guys ready? If you want me to introduce you, you can introduce yourself. All right.
Do I have the microphone or the... off the side?
I'm sure you guys want the microphone.
Yeah, and it bends.
Coral, you're...
Is this a whole speech?
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Coral Larson. I've been on the gymnastics team for two years. My favorite... My favorite event is bars. Gymnastics has made me a veteran stronger person, and my favorite... My favorite part about being on this team is that I'm co-captain. I really like this team.
Yay!
This is a good practice for...
You're doing great.
You're doing great.
My name is Mary Frenchy. I have been on the gymnastics team for three years. Reason why I joined gymnastics is because my mom did it when she was younger, and she hadn't had experience with it. So, that's why I wanted to join. And, uh... My favorite part about gymnastics is being captain on the team because I like being a leader. And, hmm... Okay.
Good job.
Hi, my name is Mary Samuel. I've been on Mega for three years now. My favorite event is beam. Gymnastics makes me more determined to get skills and more determined outside of the gym, too. And my favorite part of gymnastics is going to meet and having a good time. That's why I'm on the team.
Good job.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Fitch. My favorite event in gymnastics is bars. I joined because I was trying out the sports, and gymnastics stuck with me. This is my eighth year in gymnastics. I like being part of this team because we have lots of friends on it. And gymnastics helps me with patience because you don't get your skills on the first time that you try them.
Hi, my name is Georgia McRum. I am in... This is my fifth year of gymnastics. It is my first year on Mega. My favorite event is bars. I joined gymnastics because I thought it would be fun. And when I started doing it, I knew it was the right sport for me. My favorite thing is that there are many of my friends here, and it builds on my confidence, patience, and determination.
Awesome. I feel like I'm going to run because that just makes more sense to me.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Avery. I should have introduced myself first, but Avery Schroed. I've been here since 2017, but I've been coaching since 2005. So, I've been coaching ever since. I haven't stopped with all my full-time and extra jobs. I've just always been a coach. It kind of just stuck to me. So, I finally made it a full-time job here at Rockford and kind of built the program back up after it kind of died. So, it's just, it's like my passion. So, it's like my baby, just gymnastics and all the athletes and growing the program. And I think you heard the girls say Mega a lot. So, probably like, what's Mega? Is this Make America Great Again? No. But it's Midwest Amateur Gymnastics Association, so it's the association for kids to compete. There's many others. It probably sounds like gibberish to you, like there's USGA, there's Club Kids, but we're just kind of another option, and it's kind of a feeder program for the high school team. And then there's also pre-team. So, I think you heard some of them say they were on pre-team, too. So, we have a pre-team program that kind of preps them for Mega, and they get the competition experience. They get to learn routines, how to perform in front of a judge. And then from Mega, you usually join the high school team where they do the same thing. So, I'm the Director of Community Ed, the pre-team and Mega program, and the high school team. So, um, I think that's about it for me. I'm also a gymnastics judge, so gymnastics is my life, so...
Yeah, Avery!
Two of the girls at the front.
Sure, yeah.
Get a picture for the district here. Good job, girl.
Is this an okay spot?
Perfect.
You guys are so cute. All right, thank you.
My feet are sweating up. I'm going to shave my socks.
Let's go into the gym.
Now, young lady, you've been doing it for eight years. How old are you?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Wow, that's impressive. Keep up the good work. All of you. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good job, Coach.
Simple math.
Yeah, so our gymnastics program starts... We have moonbeams of shiny stars, which does start at age three. So, you can sign up for our Community Ed Gymnastics. The thing is, if anyone is a coach or knows of any coaches, this last session, we opened up at 6:00 PM. Most... Oh, 6:00 AM was the time? It's either 6:00 PM or 6:00 AM. We're trying to make sure, you know, the later people and the earlier people. Most of our classes were full by like 6:14 AM. And people work when I'm waiting this. So, um, I'd like to say it's a good problem to have, but it's just with the lack of coaches because it's not a sport that you can just... I can't. I can't even do a cartwheel. So, it's not like I can just jump in and teach gymnastics. It's a very specific sport. You have to be very... Jessica Johnson knows. You know, that where kids can get hurt and stuff if you're not doing it properly, you know? Soccer, which is what I coach, you know? You go out there, you might hurt an ankle or something, but it's not as much of a dangerous sport. So, if you know of any coaches, we are looking for some more that can help in our Community Ed Gymnastics program. It's just amazing. Everyone, the best gyms around. If you've never been here in the middle school, to our gym. It is a very, very nice gym. We have people all the time that come, want to look at it because most places have to carry stuff out all the time and then put it back away, and they don't have a pit. So, anyway, so that was gymnastics. Very proud of where we were when we first got here and where we are now, so... And next program I'd like to talk about is our Galaxy program, our childcare program. Another awesome program. Include yet. Before you watch this video, I do want to say there was Cody, our coordinator, was taking videos of the kids because they couldn't be here tonight. But one of the kids says, you know, "Why do you come to Galaxy? Why do you like to come to Galaxy?" He's like, "I don't know. My mom makes me come." And Cody's like, "I don't know. I accidentally deleted it, but it would have been so great to put out here," so...
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy? Going out of the room? And why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because they go to home.
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy? And why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because I like Galaxy. I'm in PC and I'm in first grade.
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy?
Wiggles.
And why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because it's fun.
My name's Sylvia, and I'm in second grade.
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy?
When we go outside because I get to play around.
And why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because I can see my best friend.
My name is Piper, and I am in third grade.
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy?
Going outside because I can chase my friends.
And why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because I can stay after school and do art.
Hi, I'm Hayden, and I'm in fourth grade. My favorite activity at Galaxy is when we get to go to KPI Lab on Friday. Something nice about Galaxy is all the stuff here are really nice, and it's really fun to be here.
Lily and it's great.
And what is your favorite activity at Galaxy?
Um, getting to go outside and play in the snow.
And what, why do you like coming to Galaxy?
Because I can read my book and when it's quiet sometimes.
So, um, if there's some of you who've never met Cody, our Galaxy coordinator, he does an amazing job. This summer, he actually, you know, because of COVID and stuff, we had to end cost. We had to kind of, we got rid of our field trips. He made sure this year that there were several field trips, and he designed it in a way that certain age groups would go. So, rather than taking all 145 kids that were signed up for Summer Galaxy, which can be a little hectic, having 145 kids in, you know, the same water park or the same this or that. So, he designed it so, you know, K through third grade would go one Friday, and third grade through sixth grade or eighth grade would go on another Friday. And he brought those back, and they had... Gosh, I felt like I was signing off on a bunch of different field trips, many people, but they had like seven or eight field trips this summer, which he brought back. And he just does an excellent job with the kids. He gets along with the kids and staff. And just the atmosphere down in Galaxy is just so much fun and so much smiles, and very, very proud of that program. And the kids obviously like to go outside in Legos. So, but that's it for our celebration.
Thank you. Awesome.
Do I just go right to the report?
You can write on it, too.
Okay, now we have to like officially say, okay, now for the... Okay, so Community Ed report. So, um, so for community education, which is all the other classes besides Galaxy and gymnastics, so all of our art classes and stuff like that. So, from July 1st until November 11th, community education offered 162 sections of community ed classes. So, now that goes, that does include gymnastics. So, like even the 6:10, you know, 6:00 PM session, a 7:00 PM session, those are all separate. But 162 sections with 1,612 registrations, which is pretty impressive just from July 1st until November 11th. And then of those 1,600 registrations, there's 926 unique users. So, 926 youth from our community have signed up or adults have signed up for a community ed class, which is, for this size of district, I think that's pretty impressive for that number of months. So, pretty excited about that. And then the RCC, the Community Center. I just left there, let me tell you. If you don't think the Community Center is the hub of Rockford Area Schools at night, just go to our parking lot on your way home right now. Parking lot's full. We have wrestling going on there right now. We have basketball practices. There's a banquet going on in the high school. I mean, there was a pizza party happening in one of the meeting rooms, and bingo, senior bingo, happened in the other two meeting rooms. So, it is definitely the hub of Rockford at nighttime. It's crazy. So, right now, but winter is not here. On January 1st, we always get even a lot more members. But right now, we have 590 primary members. So, 590 people have our primary members. And then, because we have family memberships. So, active members is 1,281 active members. So, again, for this size of a district, you can tell how much our waiting room and our field house and all that is being used. So, pretty awesome. I do have a Community Ed Advisory Meeting Council coming up on December 5th, Monday, December 5th. So, we're going to try to get some more members on that council. So, if you know of anyone who's interested to be on the Community Education Council, Advisory Council, I will also be providing food, so a free meal. So, if you know anyone who'd like to be part of that. It's good community connections. We only meet four times a year, so it's not a huge thing, but it's very impactful, but it's not a huge obligation. Any questions?
Any questions?
Comments?
Sure.
Thank you very much for pointing out how wonderful a gymnastics facility is. I really appreciate that. And please tell Avery thank you for growing the program because that was how she did. As you know, we had... Yes. A little bit of downtime there. So, she's done a great job, and you can tell much of the kids about her. So, that's pretty awesome. You know, I have a lot in my place. And I do need to point out, because you're right, there was that downtime, and she's not here. She's not our gymnastics coordinator anymore. But the only reason why I was able to be brought back before we got Avery is Nikki Koschel. And I'm sure a lot of you know her. She, she's like, she calls me, she's like, "Do you know when we're going to get it back?" I was like, "I have no idea." She goes, "All right, let's talk about me being the coordinator," you know? So, she's the one who brought it back. And so, I just have to, because it has just grown exponentially since she took it over. And then Avery, bringing Avery on after that has just been amazing. So, thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments? Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next, moving into item number six A, which is our facilities update. And I'll call upon Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Thor. All right.
Hello. Thank you again for having us up at the board meeting. We were just here at the work session, so we'll move a little bit quicker through this, but they tend us to go through the same presentation and maybe have a little bit of discussion, but provide a bunch of information at this point. So, we'll talk about what we've done in the past, where we currently sit, and what we're looking at in the future. Quick timeframe here, just to recap a little bit. We started about a year and a half ago. We did a physical condition assessment in all the facilities that had a deferred maintenance needs. See, that was about $15,000 over 10 years, which actually is pretty decent for a district in your size. You're doing well with your facilities from a deferred maintenance standpoint. We did some analyzation and educational adequacy studies to talk about programming and educational aspect of each of your facilities, which shows pitch points with capacity and needs from, you know, a staff perspective, if you will. We completed a demographic study last winter, which showed insignificant growth is projected for your district over the next 10 years. 600 on the low end, 900 on the high end, and probably even more than that as you get beyond 10 years. So, when you think about your enrollment, this is probably roughly around 1,600 right now, somewhere closer minus. You know, that's a significant item to consider for future growth. We've conducted a bunch of staff and community stakeholder input sessions, both last year and then this year as well, to gain information based on their perspective of needs. Could be building-related, could be program-related, this could be safety and security-related. We just wanted to make sure we did a comprehensive review from multiple different stakeholders within the Rockford District, two years in the role. Currently, as addressing some of those needs they were identified, we found out that there were some high priority items to be addressed right away, which you're currently completing some of them. In March, we did LTFM bonding and abatement bonding, which are two funding mechanisms that allow us to do certain styles of work or certain types of work. The abatement bonds, the parking, the bus loops that you see at both facilities that are just completing. And the LTFM bonding allows us to do some of the deferred maintenance in the facility, which is one of the things that would be on your docket tonight to solicit for roofing and facade pits for the elementary school, middle school, and high school that you're dating in December. So, utilizing both of those funding sources that are already in place to get work done, which is the highest priority needs. Talk a little bit about what that debt looks like.
Sure. And board members, the chart in front of you shows the blue bars there represent the last time the school was refinanced to the community. You go to the ones that sell school building bonds, that's remaining debt on those. The two funding sources that Ryan just mentioned, one has a tax impact, which was the abatement bonds, and that's represented by the green additional tax for 15 years. And then, and that was about $2.95 million. And then the LTFM bonds do not have a tax impact because they're being paid back by existing revenue they receive every year for LTFM dollars. You're going to spend roughly 54% of your annual allocation of your LTFM dollars over the next 15 years to pay back that debt.
So, moving into what can be the short-term priorities. We also identified a number of things that should be addressed. Secured entries. Your buildings are secure from a standpoint, I think, as everybody would think, but there's different levels of what secure is. So, taking that to the next step and providing maybe a couple more layers of security. And that might come in the form of operations. That might come in the form of software and check-in kind of things at the entrances, entrances, and also physical changes of the entrance facilities to make people come into the office and check in with the office before they have access to the building. So, all those different scenarios play in there. Any sort of renovation, we're going to talk about that, what that means for potentially this school. That would be handled from a capital facility bond perspective. The lease levy perspective is meant for just building additions. So, it can't be renovations. It can't do new buildings. It's just building additions that have to be separate, be able to be separate from the building attached here. So, it's a interesting little combination there. So, those two funding mechanisms are what allows us to kind of meet, I'll call the short-term priority, things that were identified. You know, at the middle school here, we talked about some programming challenges with the enrollment that's here at this facility. Currently, students are bused from the middle school to the high school for physical education. There's a programmatic deficiency there, meaning the kids are on a transportation mode for a part of the time, so they're only getting about half if that of the structural time of that period, which is an idea. And then also, there's a cost associated with that of actually providing the transportation for that, the students back and forth. And that happens every hour of the day, not just once. So, it's a pretty significant problem to solve. And that's what kind of led us down this road of utilizing these two funding sources to help solve that. And what you're going to see is a potential solution is while it's a problem with the middle school, what's going to appear is we're doing something for the high school. So, it's an interesting way to have to address the problem, but the problem is focused on the middle school and solving the programmatic needs here with a solution. And again, the solutions that for funding that, the first piece is issuing what are called capital facility bonds. We generate roughly $1,630,000 for project funding. This would be very similar to your long-term facility maintenance bonds.[1660.11] There's no tax impact with this, you do not need to go to the voters. It's upward approval is all that's needed. You currently receive roughly three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of capital facility dollars every single year. You would be committing to spending roughly half of that dollar, or so close to two hundred thousand dollars a year for principal and interest payments for the next fifteen-year period of time to be able to achieve that a million six worth of projects. This chart here just shows you what that would look like. The blue bars represent, you currently have been using this funding stream for previous capital facility work that you've done. So, that's almost retired, so we just have two years of small debt that we'd be adding to it and then extending it for the remaining thirteen years worth of debt service payments. So, again, using roughly half of your dollar bonds, you have half still remaining from just by not handling capital facility needs that you may have over the next fifteen years. Then the second piece, which does have a tax impact too, would be the lease levy. Once again, Ryan mentioned this is for new building space. You can build, as long as you have your sort of partner of education approval to new space that doesn't exceed twenty percent of the original footprint of the building you're adding onto. It does create tax impact as well for the act to school credit for anybody who owns ag property in your district. If you go to the next slide, Brian, we will show you, we have kind of two different options. We can do that lease levy over a twenty-year period of time or over a fifteen-year period of time. If we do, if we extend those payments over a twenty-year, you would have three point seven six five billion dollars for your project. If we limited it to a fifteen-year period of time, that would generate three point one seven billion dollars that we have available for project. And obviously, you could do something between fifteen and twenty years if you wanted as well. I'll just highlight one impact on there. Your average home is close to that four hundred thousand dollar number. That would be an annual impact of seventy-one dollars, so a tax increase of seventy-one dollars. And now, as this brought up in the work session, so I just wanna make sure as I say it, this is assuming your same tax base that you currently have. So, if you have new homes or new commercial industrial property or new ag land that would come into play, that would soften a little bit the tax increase as well. Because we have more people participating, you're paying that debt of retirement.
Can we pause for just a second? I think one of our board members had a question.
I did catch this earlier. Can you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
So, this one says no ag to school credit, but before it was ag to school credit. Can you clarify that for me?
Oh, I'm sorry, and if I misspoke, I wanna make sure that is correct, it's very good. The capital facility bonding does qualify for ag to school credit. Right now, when you receive your capital facility dollars, this is the same as with your long-term facility maintenance dollars, they come into your general fund. That does not provide any relief for ag property. When that turns into a bond, it automatically qualifies for the ag to school credit. On the lease levy, because it's not a bond, it's called certificate participation, it does not qualify for your ag to school credit. So, there's no additional relief for your people who own ag land by having this issue in that way.
So, it would cost people, like the farmers, more money?
It would be, it would be, it wouldn't be any more than necessary homework. I mean, there would be a tax increase for people who own ag.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Is the tax impact limited to the amount of real estate for their homestead and not the hall?
It's not.
Okay.
They would pay on both parcels. They would pay as residential home and the garage also an acre, and they would pay on ag rates for the rest.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions before we move on? All right, thank you.
So, that's, those are the financing mechanisms that we have available to us and we're looking at the amounts listed there to maximize the solution that we can come to. Again, addressing the middle school issue of programming, there's a couple different examples here, and they're very high level, I can sort of show what's in that space. Currently, the gymnastics program is housed in that, I'll call it the upper gym, based on this diagram, which shows just a couple different variations of what that space could be used ad as for middle school programming, full-size basketball court for fied ad, that's one of the major programs that are sections that needs to be addressed. It could be a multipurpose space, so you could have a stage and chairs for presentations or any sort of performance. Couple, you can see a couple wrestling mats would fit pretty easily within there and then a volleyball court as well. So, the overall intent would be keep it as flexible as possible, knowing that fied is probably the driving factor. But we have not spoken with, you know, administrative teams and staff exactly what that might look like. That would come after an approval of, yes, we wanna do this. So, we'd get very detailed information and input from those people and others as well to make sure that we hit the mark with what that space is gonna offer and what it needs to offer. There also is an element there, you can see a blue arrow kind of going back and forth. What that is, is between the cafeteria space on the left and the existing gym on the right is potentially allowing some sort of access between the two, whether that's a garage door or some sort of opening within that wall that allows, you know, some overflow from the cafeteria, which is pretty tight right now. But again, we wanna understand what that looks like as far as programming and hours use and how that plays into the fied spaces that we do as well in the gym stations. So, that is a consideration we'll look at. So, knowing that if we remove the gymnastics component from that one gym, which is, you know, liable, that we need to replace that somewhere. So, that would drive a solution at the high school to house that program in some capacity. So, what we have here, two kind of scenarios that we've developed. Again, there's been very little input on this. This is just to show kind of conceptually to the board what potentially could happen. Option A there is a multipurpose facility built off kind of where the current locker rooms are just north of the RCC conference rooms or classrooms, whatever you wanna call those. That's option A. Or potentially attaching it right to the end of the RCC there, you know, should be. Two simple scenarios. We will explore other options as well throughout the building if that's where the board decides to go. The best place, those seem logical to us at this point. Again, going to the same scenario of saying, okay, this is gonna be a multipurpose, a flexible space. What does that look like? Showing, okay, a basketball court in each of the options, showing a performance space in each of the options. There's probably some planned permanent seating within these, I would guess. But again, something to work through with users and people who are impacted directly with the space. Again, the wrestling mat scenario, but probably most importantly, how this gymnastics potentially fit in there. So, again, not a lot of input from the people that have been using the space at this point. We just wanted to make sure the space could fit the programs that we know are gonna be needed. But again, the shape and size and feel, it will probably not be anything like what we're showing here. It'll be a little different, once we get actual input from the users that use the space. We know that the gymnastics have just witnessed how important it is to the little girls that are here. You know, the intent would be that they're not losing anything from here to there. They're least maintaining and hopefully, in my eyes, being enhanced with some seating and some viewing that potentially could come along with it. But those options and considerations will have to be discussed, especially with moving equipment and all that, what that looks like if that happens, how it happens, when does it happen, who does it? All of those questions would have to be answered in the program and design of the space.
So, what you'd be asking for then in December would be approval for funding mechanisms to do the work, generally speaking. So, we'd say we're gonna fund some sort of enhancement to
Yeah, so what we're
make modifications and then the detailed planning commitments.
Well, we can skip over this one. Getting straight to the timeline, yeah. The purpose of the night was to round out this discussion again. We've been talking about it for a little bit of what this looks like, but the intent would be to have the board approve, formally approve those funding sources and keep those mechanisms into play in December, which allows us to start that work in January, which would allow us to get with the, all the, first identify who the stakeholders are and then start that process with them to understand what a space might look like from a, you know, a use and a function. And then we go through our round of do some concepts, do some pricing, check back, do some concepts, check some pricing, check back, you know, that takes some time. Ultimately, the project then probably being bid next fall sometime and then occupancy the year after. So, in any way, shape, or form, any sort of approval now, we're not occupying the space until fall of '24 at this point. So, you still have definitely another year of instructional calendar as you are regardless. And then, kind of rounding out that conversation, how does this play into down the road? We know we have that demographics impact coming. That's going to play into decision future-wise as far as space. STEM programming, specialized programming, CTE programming, those are all very high-level, high-priority items for each of the schools, so it's probably gonna have to be addressed down the road, especially as enrollment comes up. Maybe a land question comes into that if you have to then look at how much that enrollment is impacting the district as far as potential new facility. That plays into the capacity of all the buildings that we're gonna analyze and how this building, even though it's packed now, how that might help down the road. And then you also have your operating levy that comes due in '25. So, typical process there is you try for a renewal the year before. In case that's not successful, you can try again the next year. You know, we aren't in the discussion tonight or right now to say what you're gonna go for a renewal. We're not assuming there's probably some expectation of that, whether it increases, we don't know. But that's there, coming down the road regardless, which might also then play into, is there a building component that happens at this time? Or is it a couple years out? Do you need it? Is the enrollment coming? Those are all questions that will help come a little clearer over the next year. So, that was quick. Much quicker than the work session. Any questions, thoughts?
No questions.
All mine recovered in the work session, so.
Comments?
I don't know if anything needs to be restated from the work session or not, but because public is more public, more of the public is here, I guess I'll state that I have voiced my concerns over moving the gymnastics facility. I talked about increasing enrollment and limited space in this building. Maybe we need to look at other options, whether it's turning this facility into a community and district office facility, keeping the gymnastics space where it is. We saw tonight how beneficial it is to a gymnastics program that's growing and continuing, well, continuing to grow. I talked about the equipment. It's expensive to take it down and store and have we troubleshooted that? Do we have a space for it? Who's gonna be doing that? You know, do we have funds to replace the equipment when it gets damaged? Because it's very expensive. There you go, I guess. So, just make that public and on record, I guess.
Other comments?
I'll add a couple. I do think that it is an interesting predicament that this building is in right now. We did talk about that quite a bit in the work session with having fied every day, driving up to the high school for class and losing half of a period for fied every single day, multiple times a day. In addition to the cafeteria space being constrained and all that. So, we do have a very unique space issue on this campus. We did ask a clarifying question at the work session about the legacy of this building and if we think that it would be able to survive a few more years and, you know, if we were to move some things around, would it potentially be positioned to then support more student growth in this particular building for middle school and whatnot? And I think the answer that we got was the bones are still good, we don't have to shut the doors, we don't have to make any major changes as far as that's concerned. And I just wanted to double-check that with you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So, then it becomes a quandary about what does, what is the middle, what is this building going to be? Ms. Johnson has a really good point about all of the things that have to go with moving gymnastics, artifacts and, you know, equipment and all of those things around, as well as the unique predicament that we have with what's happening right now.
Don't disagree.
Yeah, and so, I think what I look forward to is, you know, as we continue to think through strategically where the growth is gonna be in the district, I believe strongly that whatever we do here, this kind of chess piece move, it creates an immediate solution for a problem that we, that needs to be solved for instructional learning. But it doesn't solve for significant growth that we are projecting based on some of the projections that you have given us, you know, about our enrollment in the future. That's a, that's a different question in the future about do we need to build a building and do we need to do those sort of things? And so, like, I just, I just wanted to openly say, like, that's where my mind is at right now. It's like, how do we create, if this is gonna be our middle school for a period of time, then how do we make sure that the middle school is set up in a way that supports day-to-day instructional learning? And then, if we need to move something, let's say it's creating the space in gymnastics like they've mentioned, then if that were to go up to the community center campus, what does that look like? How do we, you know, make sure that it's a logical solution versus a Band-Aid solution or something like that at that extent? So, I just wanted to say a couple of those sort of things. It's a very unique predicament in situation. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just a quick comment that, you know, we talked a little bit about the timing of the growth, right? If it's a thousand people projected over whatever period of time, that bulge of students will hit here, you know, at some point in the next ten-ish years. So, whatever innovative things you guys gotta, are gonna come up with need to take into consideration the timing of that growth and when this building is gonna, you know, essentially hit its capacity max. And then we need to think carefully about when does an additional building make sense? So, the timing thing is really important as we consider any changes. And I also think when we're talking about this investment, if we're gonna be going for additional dollars, just the community input in that conversation, because making sure that we have gymnastics represented and other folks, the administrative team, teachers, parents, involved in that conversation about how it's all gonna be designed and used, I think it's gonna be critical. And I know that you mentioned that we've done some things in the past. But once, once and if things get real when it comes to funding and if we move forward with funding for that, community input's gonna be just such an important piece of the conversation, so.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. I think one of the other things that we had talked about too, just to kind of wind the clock back a little bit, is if we're trying to solve the solution for the capacity constraint and the issue on this campus, we even talked about do we invest in this building and, you know, add an addition onto this building? And I think that the recommendation was, well, the bones are fine, like, you know, with what you got, but probably wouldn't take the money to invest in future expansion of this particular building. And that if we were going to make an investment for additions, it would be better suited in the community center space and adding onto that campus up there.
It's a more cost-effective way to go about it. Building onto the high school is, sorry for my term, a lot simpler than building onto the house up here. So, if we can actually make a smaller investment here and get what we need, but do an easier build over there, that seems to play a little bit well. You can build here if it's possible, it's just, it takes a lot more.
The challenge is because of how it's built.
Right.
Built into a hill, kind of. So, other comments, questions? We spent a lot of time talking at our work session. So, the question at hand is, just our plan is to bring this as a topic back to our next work session for a bit of time, which will be in a couple of weeks. Again, super important that the entire board is engaged in the process, that we have these conversations, that we talk about concerns, that we lift up our ideas, all the conversations that have been having. We need to continue those. So, we will have time in our next work session for a touch base on the facilities planning, which is like in the beginning of December. And then the other part, as Mr. Anderson mentioned, the action item potential, based on the timeline, if we flip that timeline up again, is to talk about our funding sources and to make a decision as a board or not on what we might or might not wish to do. And I think our hope is that we're able to have the right conversations for the next bit of time together as a board. Again, we've been trying to have facilities conversations at pretty much every board meeting so that we're able to have a conversation and potentially take action if that's where the board is at or not on December the nineteenth, so. That's kind of the timeline that we're backing into. So, again, just wanna take one more pause. Does anybody have any other questions right now? If not, look forward to the work session or Mr. Gordy. I know you're on facilities, if you have anything else that you'd like to add.
No, it's just, you know, the difficulty of the cafeteria space here as well as the instructional space with the fied and the district's encumbrance of busing every period of the day, and paying a bus driver and a bus every day is part of the issue that we're trying to solve currently. And future growth, you know, can't predict yet, but that'd be a problem that we need to solve, hopefully after we can come up with a solution here. Which is best for all programs and schools, so. Concessions have to be made in both places.
Yep. Great. Other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll end with gratitude. Thanks for all your time this evening and all your time helping us along the process and working with our administrative team and all of that, so thank you. And then we'll see you, oh, no, we're not done yet. Sorry, we have an action item to
Let me just, before you go, if you are thinking and have a question or whole board meeting you'd like us to do
Yeah, we do.
between now and the next work session, funnel that through Rhonda or however you need to get or however you need to get it so we can come and there's other information somehow that we're not providing that helps.
Awesome. Thanks. And then we do have an action item this evening as well. So if you wouldn't mind teeing that up, what we're talking about?
Yeah. So hopefully a rather simple action for you guys, similar to the payment bond project with the bus routes, what you're doing, what's in front of you tonight is to solicit the bids for a roofing and facade project, re-roofing the elementary school and then repairing some of the walls at all three buildings, actually, middle school, elementary school, and high school to, just to maintain that watertight, you know, enclosure as much as possible. So the significant part of the project is a roofing project at the elementary school that's over its warranty limit at this point. So it's re-roofing that entire facility, which will stand it up for another 30 years. So that'll be, that'll be good to take care of. And that's a large section of that LTFM bonding that you guys approved in March. So this is the solicitation of the bids. The bid date would be December 13th, which is a Tuesday, for then, if everything goes well, our expectations will, board approval for actual word of contract on December 19th as well.
That's a regular board meeting?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Good job. Good planning. We're getting there.
So does anyone have questions about the action this evening? All right. With that, I would, it is presented in your packet, so I would entertain a motion.
Eric Gordy, I make a motion to approve the advertisement to solicit bids as presented in our.
Perfect. I have a first from Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Mr. Anderson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All right. Pending no discussion or comments, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We'll see you in a couple.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's right.
All right. Next. Moving on to item number six C, which is our policy updates, first reading. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. What you have before you is a slate of policies that will need to be updated. As the board knows, we tend to follow MSBA's model policies. And it just so happens that this year they've had an abundance of policy changes. I think that's probably due to statutory changes and things like that. But you have in front of you probably 18 new policies. Lot of them have just minor changes, minor were changes within each policy. But this is a first read, so just know that. It will come back to you next month in December as a second read. And if there's no significant changes brought forward by the board, then we'll be moving forward with accepting the changes that have been suggested by MSBA. But at this point, board, there's no action. It is just a first read.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Yeah, Ms. Johnson.
I was just going to point out that policy 213 is one we discussed last month.
Correct.
At our work session regarding board committees.
Yep.
So that one is in there for our first read. We'll do a second read next month. And we've also have our resolution to pass as well through a long adapt policy. So just a heads up to everyone.
Thank you for that. And that'll tee us up perfectly for our first Monday in January. Yes. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. So it's good. That is definitely a slate of policies. So thank you for your hard work on that, everyone involved. Next, item number 6C, which is the acceptance of the superintendent resignation. Superintendent Dean submitted her resignation to the board on October the 26th, 2022. We just, and now as part of that letter, it is now officially coming before the board for a conversation. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Superintendent Dean.
Thank you. It was a difficult decision to make to submit my letter. But I think that given what has occurred over the past several years, I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work for Rockford area schools. I mean, like I said in the letter, I came here to serve an eight-week paternity leave. And by the end of my contract in June, it'll be almost five years. So I truly do appreciate and honor the work that I've done here and appreciate the opportunity that the board has given me. And I really do appreciate this community. And so it is bittersweet, but thank you. And thanks, thank this community.
Thank you. Any comments? I think we've all had some time to have conversations with Superintendent Dean in the last month or so. So with that, this is an action item for the board this evening. I would entertain a motion.
Eric Gordy, make a motion to accept the superintendent's resignation as presented or retirement as presented in the.
I don't know whether.
Yes, retire.
Retirement as presented in the packet.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kraska, first by Mr. Gordy. Any further discussion or conversation? Any no further discussion or conversation? We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. And I just do want to take a minute to express gratitude to you, Rhonda. You've weathered many storms with us in this district through COVID and all of the things. And just appreciate your leadership and appreciate you giving the board a heads up early that this is your intent, because that gives us a great opportunity to continue to build upon the amazing foundation that is Rockford area schools. And sure that we've got a really strong succession plan, which we'll talk about as our next agenda item and how we'll get there in order to fill your shoes that have been a part of this, a large part of this district for the last five years. So thank you. All right. The next agenda item is item number 6C, which is superintendent search. So searching for superintendent is different than any other sort of HR-related job. It's public. There's processes that you follow. It's our only hire as a board. Some of us were part of hiring Superintendent Dean, others were not. We also did that during COVID. And it was virtual and it was a very different process when we, when we went through that. So there's some options and I'm going to kind of look to my colleagues. We're just going to have a conversation right now about how might we and what are the things that we want to put in place in order to, in order to consider how we're going to start the process. There's things like mobilizing our at-large committee. There's things like, you know, considering, do we want to get a recruitment firm in and, you know, have those conversations? Is there training that we want to do for everyone around how, how we hire a superintendent? All of those sort of things. So I did want to just kind of lift that up for a conversation and so that we're well positioned going into the next board meeting to continue the process to, again, like we said, Superintendent Dean has given us grave notice for her intent to not renew a contract and retire, so that we have an opportunity to really make sure that we get the right person in our community for this role. And I'm going to pause, stop talking and have other board members kind of weigh in on thoughts and conversations. Mr. Gordy?
So in our previous time, we did have the committee at large get together and collect or have conversations to determine whether or not we want to bring a search committee in. At that time, we did decide to bring a search committee in and we brought in two for a review at a work session to find out what processes and procedures each would provide to us as well as a cost to the district. There's also the opportunity, as Ms. Edwards had explained, about having MSBA come in and have a nuts and bolts, this is what to consider for a superintendent process and hire. And if you check your emails, I believe there was an email communication forwarded to y'all for consideration. But I, I think it's prudent for us to have the committee at large to get together and start making decisions so we can bring those items to the board, full board during work sessions for consideration of actions.
Other comments, thoughts, questions? Ms. Nealon?
I agree with the, about enacting the committee at large for this project and then let them kind of handle all the details and, and, you know, anything like that. I'd love to just get that going and get an early jump on this. And if we do need to hire a recruiting firm or if we do need to hire a search committee, as Gordy said, I think that, that committee would be a great start.
Thank you. Other thoughts, comments?
I have a, I have a question more than a thought. My thought is I do think the committee at large should be leveraged. I mean, I personally believe that we should use a recruiting firm. We went through this process not terribly long ago. We learned a lot through that. Let's leverage that to, you know, save some expense, but not, let's not cut too many corners here. This is the most important hire that this board makes. The question that I have is if, if a hire is made, let's say January or February or a decision is made, I have no idea what the timing really looks like, but is there overlap that can happen? I mean, can you have two contracts in place?
No, they would get hired as of July 1st.
Gotcha.
Great question. Other questions or comments?
We could have just said no would have been the last thing and we won't have to be here.
I know. I thought about that too. I was like, can you really say no? Could we just say?
You're right.
You're stuck.
She's not alive.
I'm just a live practice slide. Yeah. So, okay. So it sounds like we've got, I mean, again, this is for us to get ahead of it, as Ms. Nealon said, to start mobilizing the right things, get the processes in place. So if there's no other discussion, you know, I think I would entertain a motion to do just those things.
I don't think so.
I think we do. I'd like to.
To the committee at large?
Well, for the, for, to then what they're going to do.
To give them free.
To give, well, to have them, because I think, I think the question is, is a committee at large going to reach out to the recruitment firms and bring them in, look at the, you know what I mean? Those sort of things. So just to kind of say like, what are we asking the committee at large to do? And then bring it back to the full board. I guess that's more what the motion that I would be looking for. So not to just like entertain like the committee at large, but what are they actually going to do? Like, what is their task?
So set the guardrails essentially for them. So enact committee at large to determine the hiring process ultimately and bring it back to a recommendation.
Can we remind ourselves who's on the committee at large, please?
Just you.
I am.
I, I am, but not for long.
So.
Three of us.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, at least you can get the ball rolling.
Yep. Absolutely.
So for the record, the committee at large is Ms. Nealon, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Gordy. And that, what the discussion that we've talked about is mobilizing them to take on this task, to start to looking at recruitment firms and determining, you know, or at least getting some bids, like starting that process. And you guys did that last year or last time, Gordy.
Correct.
And brought in people and then brought them in front of the board and kind of had that interview basically of the recruitment firms. And then I think, do we want to make a decision on the training? Or should we bring that back at our next?
I think that should be a good work session conversation.
Sounds good. Does somebody want to lift up that motion?
Motion to enact the committee at large to establish the hiring process for the next superintendent for Rockford area schools. How's that?
Can you repeat it? Or has it escaped your mouth and now you're?
It's gone. It's gone, Mr. Gordy.
Can we go to review? Throw the red flag?
Motion to approve enactment of the committee at large to establish the hiring process to be followed for hiring our next superintendent for Rockford area schools. That was very wordy again. Sorry.
Would it be actually the hiring process or just? Because I don't think it's really the hiring process. I think it's more, sorry, to put words in your own.
To mobilize.
To mobilize the committee at large to start superintendent search.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
To provide options to the full board for the hiring of the next superintendent.
So are you going to rescind that motion?
Yes.
And then do I have another one?
Can I just hit record?
Gordy make the motion.
Still writing.
Give him a, give him a pause here.
Unless someone from the crowd has a choice. No, just.
And then I got a copy.
I know. None of this is working. I know, right? Someone else here has words too.
I think Beth put it.
Yeah. That's what's.
Right. Okay, let's just be sure.
Let's wordsmith it real quick.
That's, we need to make a motion to enact the committee at large to research firms that would aid us in the superintendent's search. Well, do we want to be broader than that?
Yeah. I'm thinking to mobilize the committee at large to bring options to the full board for consideration in the next superintendent's search.
Okay. Thank you. Second.
For consideration.
I'm going to copy yours. So that did count?
How many?
Yes, we have it.
In the next super search.
All right. So I make a motion to mobilize the committee at large to bring options to the full board for consideration in the next superintendent's search.
All right. I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Nealon. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment related to this motion? All right. Pending no further discussion or comments, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And thank you to this board for working through that process. And thank you to the committee at large for the work that, I mean, for the work that you're going to be tasked to do over the next 30 days before our next board meeting to start to sort of bring some options forward. So thank you very much. All right. Next, moving on to item number 7A, which is the approval of the new Rockford area high school courses and descriptions for the 2023-2024 academic year. Mr. Menard, come on up.
Evening, everyone. I'm excited to present to you some of our new courses that we're proposing for the upcoming school year. I'll start with our mission and by turning the mic on. In partnership with our communities and families, Rockford area schools provides challenging opportunities to engage, inspire, and educate globally-minded citizens. I want to zero in on that line, that second from the bottom, the words engage, inspire, and educate, particularly when students go to select courses and even more specifically elective courses. It really is their opportunity to explore their passions, to build a skill set to take into the workforce or into higher education. And the more that we can provide our students a variety so that it speaks to all different types of students, the better we serve them. Specific to this year's proposals and what's particularly exciting is we set some parameters in place for our high school instructors when they went about to work and meeting in their departments and proposing courses. The first question was, what is the correlation with our three IB programs, our middle years programs in grades nine and 10, our diploma program, our college preparatory track in 11th and 12th grade, and our career-related program, which is also 11th and 12th grade? So they had to show a connection to that. Secondly, there needs to be a connection to state standards. What is the pathway for students to complete all of the standards in our particular subject area? What is the pathway for students to complete all of the standards in our particular subject area? And what way does this complement our graduation requirements? And of course, always being mindful of our resources. Does this put an undue burden on the amount of staffing that might be needed? And does it compete or conflict with other offerings? So given that as sort of a four-question filter, we received a number of proposals. One thing I took from Mr. Daniker in discussing particularly what we're gonna go through today, that I'll drill down on, is our career pathways. And the line is, it's not how smart are you, it's how are you smart? The example I gave in a meeting earlier today is I spent $270 on a plumbing issue yesterday because I don't have that skill set. Thankfully, the plumber did. And that's just one small example of the different ways that our students have different talents, different passions, and so we need to be highlighting that. One of the ways the state of Minnesota does that is their career cluster wheel. And so this outlines kind of six major career fields that we have in the state, from agriculture, food, natural resources, arts, communication, and information systems, engineering, manufacturing, technology, health science, human services, and business management and administration. Currently, the only pathway that we speak to are students who want to enter the business field. So we need to broaden our offerings for our students. And so we'll be adding three additional pathways in the coming school year. And those are in veterinary technician, veterinary science, landscaping design, and a health science pathway with a CNA certification. So talk about options.
Stop. Did you just say with a CNA certification?
CNA.
CNA?
Certified nursing assistant.
Really?
Isn't that awesome?
That's amazing.
So that's one of our four pathways now. And truly, what matters to high school students is what is this going to get me? Right, what doors does it open right after I receive that diploma? And so in the health science pathway, there is a course where you can then be eligible to take the exam to be a certified CNA. And for some folks, that's their career path. For other folks who want to move on and be a nurse practitioner or a certified RN, that might be a great stepping stone for them and getting that work experience right away. In the vet tech pathway, we're looking at veterinary science certifications. And it was noted in a meeting earlier today, that's a, that's a career field with a high need. And so we'd also be helping that career field up. Our landscape design pathway allows for landscape design and construction. There's a certification test that students will be able to take and complete successfully. And again, our business career pathway, which is the one that exists right now, we're working on getting articulated college credit for our intro to business course. Some other requirements for, specifically the IB career-related program, students have to complete two DP courses, those are the diploma program courses. Every student sits for, junior year of English is the English IB standard level course. And so that's a natural take that. And the second course is really going to be geared for whichever career pathway they're in, whichever makes the most sense. They also complete a course called Personal Professional Skills. That's where they learn, learn career preparation, interviewing, how to handle conflict in the workplace, labor laws, things of that nature. They take a semester in 11th grade and a semester in 12th grade. They also develop a language portfolio. It could be within our Spanish offerings in high school, or it could be an individual pursuit. That's 50 hours of just learning a language other than your native English. They engage in 50 hours of community service over two years. And they complete a 3,000-word essay or a 1,500-word essay and reflect a project of an ethical dilemma in their chosen career pathway. So problem solving, learning how to use resources, how to collaborate with other people, and how to perhaps solve a really intricate problem in whichever career path they're looking to find. So just some logistical course names and changes. Our visual art, we're looking to drop that higher-level distinction, particularly in a high school of our size. That just becomes too many offerings. And so you find that the course sometimes competes with itself if you offer too many of the standard level and the higher level. So we would be truncating that just a visual art SL. Health becomes Health and Wellness to incorporate the six areas of wellness. Health Careers, just to clarify things for students, becomes Health Science Careers. DP Biology HL and the College Human Bio, we are just calling it DP Biology HL, that's a two-year science. Psychology becomes Psychology 1, in the event that we may want to create a Psychology 2 one day and bring back Sociology, going back to that career wheel that has to do with the Health and Human Services. Animal Sciences 1 becomes Animal Science. And same as mentioned for Visual Art, Film drops down to just Film SL at the standard level for a high school of our size. So all these exciting pathways, we have to add some classes for kids to take. In our English department, we're gonna be offering Intro to Film, which would be a great prerequisite for students interested in taking the IB Film course. Really gets them some vocabulary, nuts and bolts, and a good introduction to standard-level work they'll be doing. Or it could just be an elective course for students who like video production, but maybe they don't want to take the IB Film class. Science, simply changing the name, right now it's NYPD Physics 9. We could change in the state standards for science, the sequencing is different. And so incorporating many different types of science, including the Earth and Space Standards that are now moving into the ninth grade level. History and Popular Culture is another take, sort of a historical take on the study of film and other genres. Visual Arts HL Year 2, this is an ad that will get our current juniors through that HL Year 2 course. So this isn't one that will be staying long. It's simply a pathway to get our junior students through that higher level next year. Interesting in the Spanish department, we're proposing Spanish for Spanish speakers. This is on a two-year rotation. And it's specific to students who maybe their spoken language in the home is Spanish. Perhaps they have emigrated from another location in the country or from out of the country. And so what we're noticing is both a skill enhancement and then a skill deficit when it comes to the study of Spanish in a typical Spanish 1, Spanish 2, 3, 4 sequence. We have some students who are really advanced in terms of oral skills, but are struggling because at home, sitting around a kid's table, how many of you conjugate verbs? And so it really, to drill down on what they need to be learning to get them up to speed on some of those more academic-focused Spanish skills. And considering the advanced oral skills that they have, it's just a different way of approaching it and teaching it. So as you can imagine, it's a certain subset of students that would qualify for this. So the proposal is that we would run a Year A and a Year B, and we'd have students in grades nine and 10, just take two years of that curriculum. The CNA course, as mentioned before, that really is the capstone for that Health and Health Services pathway. And in addition, changing the name of our FIET course to Lifelong Physical Activity. This places an emphasis on activities that can be used for your lifetime. So not just sports while you're in high school and super athletic. It's really learning and emphasizing that lifelong physical activity and developing healthy habits. Agriculture, we have to add that Landscape Design and Construction course. We are working with the University of Minnesota to have credit tied to our Animal Science course, so that'd be a college and schools course. Veterinary Science to prepare them for the veterinary science exam. Mu T U is a Dairy Science course, where we talk about livestock and cattle and dairy farming. And so our agriculture teacher is very excited about that. A couple more offerings in the Performing Arts. We are going to be putting multiple choral sections back in our registration guide in the hopes that we build back to multiple performing vocal arts as well as these two, I think they're a little bit more accessible to students who are maybe not musical performers but need that fine art credit. And so music through technology is an interesting way for a student who might be a little bit more into the sciences to study the science of music. And then Musical Theater is really a Popular Culture and Survey Course for students interested in studying music but maybe not getting up in seconds of hours. That is all I have for you. Any questions?
I have two questions. So this is awesome to see all of the, you know, line curriculum and all of those sort of things. With the, with the course changes, is there any additional budgetary, you know, elements that the district needs to consider?
I don't think so. We try to be really smart with reducing some of those higher-level courses and, and we're gonna be pushing kids into those standard-level courses to raise section numbers, not absorbently, but so that we can make the courses run. That's one thing we've noticed as the courses for life of literature compete with each other is we can't run either of the two. And so by pushing them into one classroom, I hope that we can actually sustain more options for our kids.
The other part of it is just putting on my professional hat. Working in healthcare, it's pretty awesome to see that people can leave Rockford or even before they leave Rockford, because it looks like you could take the courses up as long as you've done health, to leave as a certified nursing assistant and have a job in the healthcare field. There, we are in a crisis as far as healthcare workers. And so seeing the ability to, you know, to leave our high school with that certification is pretty awesome. So my other question on that is you do also have to sit for a certification exam. So is that on the, on the individual student to pay for that, or is that a part of the curriculum?
So we are still in discussion on that. Yep, we, we would look to partner with one of our local technologists and then we would look at cost and the costs that are associated with it. What can we budget in terms of, you know, this will probably live in the Health Department. And so what is the Health Department budget? And how can we plan effectively so that it's not an undue burden on either the students' families or the school?
And then my last question is around the CNE versus CME. So Certified Nursing Assistant is what it sounds like our district chose. Is that the only option for, for that sort of a program within the schools? Or can, is there also options to do Certified Medical Assistant, which serves more in a clinic-based setting?
Yeah, good question. I think that's part of the reason that we wanted to broaden the title of that pathway to Health Services. And so we're gonna start with the CNA. We have that application process. And we'd like to continue to add multiple certifications. And we're, we're thinking, well, what is the benefit to the student? And what can they physically take with them when they graduate to be employable?
Awesome, thank you. Those are my questions. Other questions? Mr. Gordy.
Yeah, thank you. Did I hear right? So basically combining and reducing course offerings are being offset by the addition of new, so there's no new net additions to the course offering guide? Is that accurate?
So the additions come in our elective courses to offset courses that will not have enough enrollment in them to run.
And then you'll shut those, those will be shut down. And that, and that's, that'll, that'll be an interesting proponent, right? Because finite amount of children with a lot of courses, right? And then having to decide, well, we can't do this or do that. And as a board, we have committed to doing IB. Which comes along with the career pathways, which comes along with having to properly staff our high school, which comes with more FTE possibly to offer some of these things with right-sized courses upon registration. So just a comment that there may be need in the future for more help to properly staff the high school for some of these programs, as I was reading through and looking. Because as great as Mr. Furtick is, I don't know how many more sections he can teach at the same time.
True.
So just saying.
Yeah, you're right. And then the other thing we're going to be looking at is, do all of these courses run every year? Or is there a cycle? We're gonna run this every other year, we're gonna run this in the odd years. We might run this every three years. So get your four-year planner out, your academic planner, and take it seriously and have a plan for what you want to take throughout your whole high school career.
Mr. Anderson?
Probably a remedial question. That's kind of my MO. The, with the elimination of some HL IB curriculum, how does that impact a student's pursuit of an IB diploma?
Great question. I think it, it makes the path clearer. So in other words, you have to take three HL courses out of the six, whichever ones you choose. And so yes, it restricts your options a little bit. If you're particularly passionate about Visual Arts, for example, that can be one of your higher-level choices. But again, typically in a high school this size, you're really going to see one option for your three HL courses, and that's typically English, Biology, and something else. If you're really good at math, it's probably math. If you're not so good at math and you like history, it's probably HL or history. And the rest of them can be standard level, which is another reason that we wanted to add all these electives is because by reducing it to a standard level, you're opening up more scheduled room for electives. And those will be driven by student interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Daniker would like to join at the podium, which is, yes, for me.
Thank you. I just want to add, I mean, there's some questions about finances. And so Jared, you're doing asked about startup costs essentially. So we're doing startup costs with CNA. We're looking at funding through grant opportunities that we never have. And then also, you guys spoke to the assessor, the examination for SCANS. And one of the things that has recently highlighted in the state of Minnesota is subsiding the first attempt at the certification for CNA candidates who are high school students.
Wow.
Yes, and so that, we don't expect that to be long-term. And that is a cost that we'll have to, you know, pay to get to the rest of the people that are tied here. But for the time being, that would not be borne by the students nor the district.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Menard? This is an action item two. You're asking us to.
Yes.
Do some things.
And our registration guide.
Yes. Yep, Ms. Johnson?
The Biology, the college is dropping. Are we, is that no longer the college and the schools course? Or is it embedded in it and just not worded that way? Just wondering if the title changing or if we're dropping that? Just wondering.
So we are dropping that because we need to be in compliance with teacher certification.
That's what it is, well, okay.
All right, Eric Gordy, I'll make a, yeah, make a motion to approve course additions as presented.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Anderson, I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your time and information this evening. Appreciate it. All right, next, moving on to item number 7B, which is our Activity Director Report. Call upon our Activities Director, Mr. Pratt.
Okay, well, thank you, Gordon, or chair, everybody else is here. First off, we're gonna have a guest presenter. The cross-country team is gonna be represented by Gwen Keller, who's gonna present their year review. Something I'd like to do each time I'm here, maybe pick one or two teams, have a senior, senior captain come up and, and kind of talk about their year. She's here, she's gonna do it, and her coach, head coach Jeff Dickman's here. His first year as a cross-country coach, and I just want to publicly say he's done an outstanding job. These kids, they work their tails off and very organized. It's been an actual joy to see him work because he is, he's a C special and he's also a Rockford grad. So Gwen, you're on.
Hi, I'm Gwen Keller, Gwen Jr., and I was the leader of the cross-country team this year. So this year we had over 30 athletes participating in cross-country, including two first-time cross-country runners. And it was super cool because it just shows how welcoming our program is. And you know, as I'm, this is my second year at Rockford. And Dickman has been very welcoming and I really appreciated it. And we also introduced a program for sixth-grade participation via community ed. So it's similar to the track program. So as we know, academics is very important in addition to our sports. So 16 in total, 18 athletes in grades 10 to 12 have an A or B average. And 11 were recognized as an all-conference academic at Wright County Conference, which means that we need to have a 3.7 GPA and young varsity roster. So in addition to that, the boys varsity section team achieved silver status with a GPA average of 3.742, which is crazy. And then the girls got a gold status with an average of a. And then the girls got a gold status with an average of a three-point-nine-six-two.
What?
So we have some smart people on the team. So for the boys' results, so they tied for highest conference meet finish since joining Wright County Conference West in 2015. So we're fifth place and we were only one point away from fourth place. So next year. We had three all-conference honorable mention athletes. So that means that they finished between thirteenth and twelfth in conference meet. And then it was the first time with three male athletes in top twenty-four of conference rates since 2017. And then tenth place in sections, which had their best finish and best point total since 2017. And then top two teams advancing to stay from our section were fourth and fifth of the state meet. So down in fourth and so, so girls, we got third in the conference meet and seventh in the section meet. We had one all-conference and two all-conference honorable mention athletes. So like I said earlier, you know, cross-country program, we really value both academics and athletics. So now I'm going to talk about Brittany Gifford because she's insanely hard. She set the girls' school five K time record with nineteen oh four, which is absolutely crazy. Previous record was nineteen twenty-eight, twenty seventeen. She earned her fourth overall all-conference award, which ties with the school record. She was recognized as an all-state academic, so top fifteen at sections with a GPA of three-point-six-seven or higher. She qualified for state as an individual for the third time, which ties the school record, and she's only a sophomore. So she has so much more potential. And then when she went to the state meet at St. Olaf College in Northfield, she got forty-first, which is such a great achievement. So that's kind of going to recap for cross-country. Do you guys have any time?
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, it's hard to follow.
Dan, before you...
So I, I, on my sheet, I put a...
Should we do a picture? Do you want to do a picture?
With your coach.
Okay, I'll quickly go over the rest of the sports for the fall. Girls tennis, girls tennis in the second year. Twenty-six girls played tennis this year. I think we had twelve matches. I think one got rained out. But what I do want to publicly say is just thank the Wright County Schools for, we reach out to them and they bring kids over. Lower-level kids that are just learning. Our kids are just kind of learning to play. We have a couple that play a little bit better tennis. And they've done a real nice job of reaching out and helping us to develop this program. We had added an assistant coach for twenty-six girls and a lot of fundamental work. And Coach Nelson and Assistant Coach Huber did a great job with the girls this year. Boys and girls soccer, we had a first-year girls' soccer coach because somebody retired. And David Montgomery worked with the girls. He worked really hard. And the numbers were just not there this year. We had had a long year, long season for the girls, and the boys, it was almost just as long. And across the board, numbers in soccer in this area are down a little bit. And so it's going to take a little bit of time to build that up. And I think both coaches are working hard to do that. They're young, so they'll, they'll be back. But we put it in a tough spot, seventh, eighth graders playing J V soccer. And the reason we had to do that is because there weren't a lot of game opportunities at the seventh and eighth grade level or the C level, just because of soccer in the area. So what we usually do is call and let them know that it's kind of a lower-level team. It's a seventh, eighth grade team and try to bring the, a group of kids that be a little more competitive. Most schools do that, not all. Varsity football, the football program across the board, numbers are good. They're strong. Varsity team ran the Lupeski Litchfield again this year, second year in a row. And I think this year, with the exception of the first game of the year, the varsity team, I think, lost one score a game in every game. It was just one of those years and growing gear. And I think the kids worked their tails off and would follow them right to the end. And then I think that, you know, hopefully they get back in the weight room and get going again for next year. Volleyball, volleyball had a nice year. It was interesting. When the first volleyball game that went to this year, I noticed not real tall. Were not real tall at all. But I watched them play and they're really scrappy and they just, they're everywhere. They, no ball went uncontested. They were everywhere, but they ran into a kind of a buzzsaw in Annabell in the sections. And, you know, they had a couple six-one girls and it just, you can only do so much. So they had a great year. They only graduated one. So they'll all be back next year. So it'll be interesting to see what they can do. I don't know if they're going to grow that much. They'll, I think they'll be very competitive. The musical that just ended, wow, was that fun? We had nearselves every night. Sunday, not Sunday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, Monday, I think we had eight tickets left, five hundred and twenty-five. So it was so fun. There's a hundred and twenty kids involved in that musical. That's including the pit and backstage. And I got to tell you, we had chairs set up in the back of the auditorium for some of the younger kids to wait until the park came out. This ain't going to work. They were phenomenal. Their behavior was unbelievable. You didn't even know they were over there until they got up and they started running past me to go out the door, to go in backstage, to come onto the stage. And it was, it was the directors and how they work with those kids and the expectation they set for those kids and how well they did. It was really fun to watch. Winter sports meeting we had, not very well attended. It was more like a spring meeting. And I'm not sure why, but that happens every once in a while. Maybe they're getting tired of hearing me talk. So they just show up for the individual meetings. That's okay. We did transition into the, we're all, we're, all teams are up and running now. Girls, middle school, girls' basketball started back on October twenty-fourth. And gymnastics and winter cheer started on the fourteenth, along with girls' basketball. And then just today, wrestling and boys' basketball started. So we're up and running. Middle school, middle school girls' basketball, just to shout out, if, we have, we have two coaches new to the program. They're doing a great job with the girls. They're very responsive. They're trying to get the kids as much time as they can to play. And it's a difficult season because everybody has a little different program. New London Spicer has to play seventh grade game followed by an eighth grade game. They only have one coach. D C has to play only one seventh grade game and two eighth grade games. And so the coaches have to communicate back and forth to find out the best way and how we have to do that. And then they have to tell me to make sure I get the right number of officials there. So my next plea, officiating, if anybody up there knows of officials who wants to work in middle school or C squad games, we need officials. And hiring coaches has been difficult. Finding a basketball coach this year for middle school was like pulling teeth. I've never had that happen. Usually have ten to fifteen applicants, zero. We had to beat the bushes to get that filled. We still have openings for seventh, seventh or eighth grade boys' basketball. I mean, it's, it's bizarre. As we, as we get forward, look forward to the winter season. Last year, if you remember, we had a Wright County Conference Leadership Summit with tenth graders. We did another one this year, about two weeks ago, with eleventh graders. I took ten of the same, ten of the kids that went in, in last year, sophomores. And they listened to a speaker, Craig Hillier, who spoke about leadership. And at the end of the conference, we showed a video of, maybe some of you saw Joe Maurer and what he did in high school. It's a super neat video. He had, there's a blind student that he befriended and invited him to sit at their table at lunch. So we challenged the kids. Don't let anybody eat alone. And, you know, we talked as A Ds and we're like, eh, we'll see. We're not sure if it's working or not. But the leadership component for Rockford is what's going to springboard us. I'm going to work with those ten to twenty kids about behavior for basketball games. And I say basketball because it's such a confined area. We have the student section down at the end, right next to their student section. And it just gets, it gets to be problematic. Let's just put it that way. And we really want our kids to, to kind of police each other and not allow the behavior, some of the behavior that happens, happens. So part of our charge is to work with the kids to help police that so that we can stay down there. Because honestly, if the behavior doesn't improve, we're going to eliminate that end of the court crew, if you will. And that's tough to say, but it just, it just gets too volatile, too hard as supervisors to work that thing. One last bright spot, Alice Altman, November ninth, signed a national letter of intent to play baseball for the Gophers in the fall of 2023. That's pretty exciting. We will have another signing day in February, but that was, that was a legit early signing Division One, and we'll always do that. So I think that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for the update? There's three action items to follow, but just checking questions for the update. All right, moving on.
All right. Travel, boys' basketball. Boys' basketball team will be going to St. Cloud for the Grand City Classic on December twenty-ninth and thirtieth. They're looking for permission to stay overnight. They're not sure if they're going to yet. They know that if they're, if that's an option, they have to make sure they get approval. It's a bonding experience. It's fun for the kids. For coaches, it's kind of tough, but it's fun for the kids. But they, they would like, like permission to continue moving forward with an overnight and to be the twenty-ninth in St. Cloud.
I think it's just important to call out for the purpose of the public that this would be funded at the expense of the players and families.
They will be funding this through their booster club, not through the twenty-one account in the district, but through the booster club's account. And they have, they have a lot of fund raising. They'll cover the costs. Yeah, so it's really no cost to the district, the bus. Yeah, we did transportation.
Are we doing them all individually or do them all together?
We'll do them all individually because I have to abstain.
Okay, very good. So Eric Gordy, I make a motion to approve the basketball overnight as presented in the act.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second? I have a second. I have a second by Ms. Johnson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I have to abstain because I have a student in the program. Mr. Anderson, Amy Edwards abstaining. Mr. Anderson abstaining. Motion carries. Oh, any opposed? No one opposed. All right, thank you. All right, next.
Gymnastics. The gymnastics team will be participating in the Minnetoka High School invite. They would like to stay overnight on the twenty-eighth. Again, team bonding. Funds will be taken from the booster club, the money that they've raised. So we don't cost to the district and Saturday night, so there's no school missed. That, the buses, the bus won't stay. It typically drops him off, then goes back, picks him up, takes him to breakfast, takes him to the meet, that kind of stuff. So it's, again, it's, it's more of a team bonding than really a need. I mean, Minnetoka, you don't really need to stay over at Minnetoka, but I think it's a big deal for the kids.
All right, any questions? Voice, this is an action item. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the gymnastics overnight stay.
I have a first by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Anderson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Putting no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed and anyone abstaining? All right, thank you. Next.
Okay, last one's a jazz band. This is one, I think, is probably more necessary than the other two in the sense that they go to Avicii for a clinic in a competition. They don't get out of there until late. And when they did come back from Rockford that night, I think it hit like two in the morning. And I talked to Gerald and I said, I put the luggage there and said, that's crazy. You guys should stay overnight. I mean, and so he said, yeah, and they did it, I think, last year and they really enjoyed it. And it was great for the program. And I hope we can move this forward again. Again, the program's going to cover everything from food to lodging. So it really is no cost. Overnight is, you know, overnight bus. I'm not sure if he's going to get a coach bus or if he'll do a school bus. But either way, the cost would be incurred by the team.
All right, any questions? All right, this is an action item. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the jazz band's trip to Avicii overnight stay.
I have first by Ms. Johnson. I have a second by Mr. Gordy. That couldn't get in best in the future. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed and any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention. Mr. Anderson carries. Thank you.
Weather clarification?
Yeah.
Let's shoot the pen.
Big ideas, big pen.
Thank you.
Special, thank you.
Do I use it? Only big ideas, Mr. Pratt.
All right, next. All right, next, moving on to item number eight A, which is Resolution of Acknowledgement of Contradictions to the Association. Then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dina.
Yes, thank you, Chair Edwards. Again, again, this month, we are able to acknowledge the contributions provided by our, our school community. And as you can see by the list of donations and donors, it's, again, a variety of individual citizens of our community as well as community organizations like the Lions, as well as the Rockford Foundation. And not only are there financial contributions, but other contributions in terms of T-shirts. And, and I'm noticing here, the band program received two tubas for their middle school program. So just every month, I'm amazed by the generosity of this district. And again, it's both financial and just items that are in need. So again, thank you for allowing me to lift this up.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, this is a, a action item. I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as stated in the agenda.
I have a first for Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Neeland. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All right, putting no further discussion or comment. This is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Ms. Praska?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Neeland?
Aye.
And then Amy Edwards, aye, carries unanimously as presented. Thank you. And yes, I second what Superintendent Dina said about the generosity of our community and meeting the needs of the district in so many different ways. So gratitude amounts. All right, next, moving on to item number nine A. So if there are faculty, staff here that wish to go, you will not be called upon for the next updates in the announcement section of the board agenda. You, of course, are welcome to stay as well. So I will just turn it over to, how about Ms. Johnson? You want to start? Oh, sorry, sorry, duh. I got two steps ahead. So nine A is a work session of the Board of Education on Monday, December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty P M in this District Office Boardroom, which will be immediately, no. And then the next meeting after that is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. And that will also be a truth and taxation hearing. That'll be on Monday, December the nineteenth, at six-thirty P M in the District Office Boardroom. Any questions, comments, inaccuracies, issues with those meetings?
I won't be at the December fifth work session. On that point, I will be late to that one.
Okay.
But I will be here.
Okay.
It's the same night as the Community Education meeting where we're inviting new members.
Nice, got it.
And there's certain...
Oh, right. We didn't hear that earlier.
It's our first in-person since I've been on that committee.
Oh, nice. That'll be nice to go and meet everyone. Good. Okay, well, that's good. Any other conflicts with that date? Otherwise, it sounds like we'll have five eventually. Perfect. All right. With that, we can move into item number nine B, which then is our board and committee. With that, we can move into item number nine B, which then is our board and committee updates. And I will then turn it over to Ms. Johnson. Do you want to, or do you, I can, how about Mr. Anderson?
Sure.
Short as usual. Attended the election certification. That was really the only additional meeting other than the regular stuff. So attended the Ed Foundation fundraiser, had a lot of fun. My legs are sore from dancing, so there you go.
Ms. Neeland?
I just had the cha, am I close? There we go. I just had the, I went to the Chamber Luncheon on, a couple of weeks ago. That was nice. I also went to the Education Foundation Gala this past weekend, which was a good time. Still volunteering with Safe routes to school and having that kind of time to be helping our kiddos get across the highway. Other than those, I think that's probably all I have. But a couple of things coming down the pipeline for me.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you, Jenny, for attending the luncheon. And on that note, my speaker does not want to stay on. I tried so many times to make a motion and Jessica beat me to saying, because Mike, they want to start up, but now it's not. So there is, and if you're interested, I think one of, one of us can go. The Chamber's having their mixer slash bingo. So if you want information, because you have to register, shoot me an email and I'll send you the registration. Because I think it'll be fun to have us, you know, there. So it's fun, if you have ya.
I have a date for you, if you'd like. It is December fifteenth at five thirty at the Choo Choo.
And I know there's a twenty dollar fee, so if, you know, but you get desserts and drinks and frolicking. So if I can forward you the registration if you're interested. So thank you for going to the luncheon, Jenny. I appreciate that. And I was, so what did I do? The prep planning for this meeting and the work session. And thank you to Superintendent Dean and Amy for, I, we met while I was in an Uber, so that was interesting. The Uber driver thought I was really odd talking to someone. We talked about Uber, but that's okay. And, and I also went to the vote, the whatever we did last week.
Certification.
Yes, the certification. And then just before this meet, the meeting tonight, we were at the World's Best Work Force. So if anybody wants to see, we did, some of the information was shared, but then I have some handles for our egg stuff, if you want to look at that. I, as a wife of an egg person, am happy to see us moving forward with offering more egg, because I know we need them. And then I wasn't able to join the C legislative platform, but I did have, thank you for putting the copy in each of your folder. It's pretty much the same as last year's platform. So it's still a drop form, but I'm assuming we're going to still push forward with improving finances. And they have lots of money to spend, so let's hope this year may, maybe actually spend some on education, right? And that's it for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Beth. Any questions? Mr. Gordy?
Thank you. Several facilities committee meetings, several negotiations, meetings with two eighty-four and conversation about principles as well. The MSBA pre-delegate assembly was last weekend. I know there was an email that came out in your weekly updates from MSBA, which has the delegate booklet in it. So if you want to look to see standard items that you see every year, fully funding meals, fully funding cross-subs city of education, recruitment and retention of teachers, accurate or allocation of aid for, one of the interesting ones, allocation of aid for non-metro school districts with lower business opportunities, right? There was a talk about increasing aid in that. Yeah, property poor districts, yeah.
Property poor districts.
So that was, that was an interesting one. But other than that, that, that's about that. And December third is the delegate assembly, so whoo, 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 ready?
Thank you for doing that.
Those are my board things.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Johnson.
All right, so I attended the continuing, the district continuing Ed meeting. It's either beginning of November or end of October, something off the top of my head. I can look at my calendar, classes, end of October. Certification meeting, of course. Masico, I'm on the committee for our Masico board for negotiating the contracts for, not for teachers or paras, but for the at-will employees and also the executive director. Currently, we're negotiating the executive director's contract. I know I've said this before, but she's absolutely outstanding. She's currently the, I have it here, for MACE, which is a Minnesota Administrators for Special Education group. She is a president-elect for that. That, to me, speaks volumes about the type of person she is. She's something really special, and I really hope that our district never loses her. Like, she's, she's amazing for our special ed co-op that we're a part of. So in negotiating her contract, something that's kind of beneficial is when negotiating her pay, it isn't something that affects our districts. It's something that this is what her pay is, and we go to the federal government, we say this is her pay, and the federal government funds it. So we're able to pay her what she's worth. And so we're, we're working hard to negotiate that contract and make sure that we're able to hang on to her, because she's extremely valuable to us. And I spoke with Superintendent Dean about it, and she has expressed to me, whatever you can do, hang on to her, because she's, she's pretty awesome. We're very fortunate. The stuff that she's done for that district, or for our district, our special ed co-op is pretty awesome. Something that she brought to our attention at our last meeting was for professional development. And if those of you that have been on the board with me here, you know that that's something that I think is really important, that districts provide that professional development to their staff. And she's, they've worked really hard, and they now have a wonderful, like, website available to their staff where they can go and find professional development that might be free to them or scheduled. And it's, they've done a beautiful job with it, and I just thought it was pretty awesome. I was impressed with it. So that's Masico negotiations. We have had negotiations with two eighty-four. We've discussed principles negotiations and I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Just my committee updates and board general updates, of course, canvassing the election with you all, board preps with Beth and Superintendent Dean, facility committees, and we did add an extra one just because of all of the conversations and all of the things. So we do try to meet about every two weeks, but we did throw in an extra one last week just because of the financing and different conversations and decisions that we've been bringing forward to the board. And I've just really appreciated that group as well. And then also just had the opportunity to attend the marching band concert. And man, that is impressive. Yeah, just so much fun to see how that all comes together in the gymnasium and just the, the flag corps and all of, like, all of the things that go into that marching band concert and the drum line. And it just, you can feel it. And so it's super fun, and I just really appreciated the opportunity to go to that concert in the last month. So, yeah, just so much talent in this district with the kids in the, in the faculty. But, you know, it just really is. And we're just, as Miranda says, we are, what are we, like, the best kept secret on the west metro? But it is, and it's our, it's our teachers that find the talent, curate it, cultivate it, help, help our students, maybe even push themselves a little bit further. And you can see that in all of the things that they sign up for, even thinking about Mr. Prask's update tonight, too, with all of the different activities and all of the different things. So anyway, really cool there. And then similarly, I had the opportunity to attend the Ed Foundation. And again, just seeing so many people come together in one, under one roof to raise money for the kiddos of this district is incredibly impressive. So fun to, fun to go to that. All right, those are my updates.
Thank you, Chair Edwards, and thank you for lifting up the indoor marching band concert. I had never experienced that prior to coming to Rockford, to have an indoor marching band concert. It's just, I hadn't seen it before, so I love that. I'm going to switch around my report today and start with, and not start with just my, my standard committee items. I first want to thank Krista Larson for managing the election and all the protocols and policies and just making sure that every single little piece of that was buttoned up tightly. Working with two counties is difficult. And this was an election that had, even though it was a midterm election, it had a lot of energy around it. And so had a lot of turn, we had high turnout, as we saw in the documents during our special board meeting last Friday. But I really want to lift up Krista for managing the whole process. So thank you, Krista. Secondly, I shared with the board in, in email that I will be mentoring a couple of individuals who are working on their superintendent's license. They are required to do hours similar to a classroom teacher who does a practicum or a principal who's required to do so many hours. The same is true for superintendents. And one of those mentees is here today. She's actually part of the Rockford community already, and it's Kellyanne Lacrim. And Kellyanne is a counselor at the high school currently. And again, she's working on her superintendent license, and we've met a couple of times now. And she'll be doing some things kind of behind the scenes, as well as presenting to the board, hopefully, a couple of times. So giving her that experience. And again, Kellyanne is here. Can you lay Kellyanne? Okay, a couple of other things. XL Energy shutting us down. We were notified last week, well, take that back. We've actually been in conversation with XL Energy for the past couple of months. They've got a big electrical project going on on County Road fifty that started way east of the, of the high school and has, you know, made its way down to in front of the high school and now is kind of, it's kind of stopped right here.
It's way to Delano.
Oh, is it on the way to Delano? Okay. For several, several weeks, they had indicated that, that we would not be impacted in terms of our electricity. But about three weeks ago, they did reach out and said, well, we're going to have to. We're going to have to take that side of the district, if you will, the Hennepin County side down. But the good news is that we were able to negotiate a day. And so XL really has been good to work with in terms of identifying a specific day to, to close the district down. And just looking at all the days with, you know, us being in session, because we, we expressed to them, you know, shutting us down is, you know, a loss of an instructional day. There's that, there's a ripple effect throughout the district. That we landed on next Wednesday, or this Wednesday, two days from now, sorry. We landed on this Wednesday, on November twenty-third, as being that day that we will shut down the district on the Hennepin County side. So that's the high school, the elementary, and the, the RCC and the bus garage. There'll be no electricity to those areas starting, well, they're going to start about nine o'clock, but we're going to shut down at eight. And again, it was probably the least disruptive day going into the winter season, when the facilities are used every day after school, every weekend. And so we just decided to jump on it now. And again, we came up, we negotiated the date just last week, and it's like, we're just going to make it work. The only two programs running is our Galaxy program, which will actually move over here to the middle school for the one day. Melissa talked about Cody a little bit earlier in her presentation, but Cody has already notified the director of Galaxy, has already notified his families of, or our families, sorry, of the move to the middle school. And so they are aware of that, and those families will come in through door four. And we've already identified spaces here in the middle schools that the kiddos can use. The other program that will have to be shut down for the day is the community center. And it is, I get it, kids are out of school and parents are looking like, hey, well, they'll have to get up five to eight A. M. But we will have it open for those first few hours of the day, and then we will have to shut it down. There was some discussion about maybe opening it back up, because XL Energy is saying they only need about five hours of time, but we don't want to advertise to our members that it would open back up at four o'clock when we don't know for sure. I mean, things last longer. And in talking with, with both Jeff and Jim, when you shut things down, they don't necessarily just kind of churn right back up. So there'll have to be some resetting of different systems. The other complicating factor with shutting down the, that side of the district is our district servers are over in the high school, the, the server closets, if you will. And so this building will be without, will be working with hotspots on that one day out of this building. So lot of, lot of moving parts just to close down for, for one non-student contact day, but we're going to make it work. And thanks to Jim and Jeff and really the entire administrative team for making it happen.
Will it be better, are the backups running for the information systems during the outage?
There'll, there'll be, no. In terms of, of things like attendance and things like that, we'll be doing manual paper pencil. We will not have access to the server, so any work, like the district office, will be open. And any work that is out there on the server, we're going to pull into and put it on our desktop, if you will. I know the custodial staff will be on what we're going to call fire alert over on the Hennepin side, because we will not have our, our fire, what do you call, the system, the system itself. So again, they'll be kind of on fire alert over there to make sure that everything runs well.
Building security, does that need to be?
So everything that, and I wish Jim was here, and I'm sorry he, he had to leave. In terms of building security and doors, the way things are set in terms of the programming, they're, they have to stay like that. Even including the heat in this building for that one day, the heat is going to be set at a certain temperature, and then it's going to stay like that. There's no, oh, that's why we came over, Cody came over, and we identified the specific spaces that he was going to use, because we'll set the heat in those specific spaces. And then the rest of the building will be set at a lower, at a lower temperature, if you will. And so it's not like, oh, we can use this other space, because there might not be as much heat. So.
So clarifying on the, what Brady mentioned, so the doors will be locked and like, stay locked, like, okay, so we're.
Correct. Thank you. Correct. And again, we've already kind of troubleshoot how that will look in the morning. We'll get the majority of our kids first thing in the morning, and these are families that are used to dropping off on those non-student contact days, so they kind of have their routine too. But we also are using like Google, what do you call it? Google, when you have a Google phone number, a Google phone number, to post on both the district office door as well as door four, which is the main entrance to the middle school, so that a parent who's dropping off at kind of a random time, if you will, maybe instead of dropping off first thing in the morning, they're going to drop off at ten thirty, which they can. They can just call that number, and then somebody will come let them in. Again, a lot of logistics, just to hose down the, you know, the building for, or moving a program for one day. The second thing, any questions about that? The second thing, any questions about that? And I, yeah, I haven't really received any, any emails or anything, so that's a good thing.
I'm just glad the calendar fitted.
Right.
But then we actually don't have school that day, because I think in the past, we've had school.
We have.
So, it worked out nicely.
It did. And again, XL Energy was real good about working with our calendar, and making sure their crews were, or, they had crews available. The other thing that I wanted to lift up before I go through my, my meetings, is we received an email on Friday from MDE, and there was a decision that came out of the Attorney General's Office as it relates to alternative meals. And what many districts have practiced is that when a student's lunch balance goes negative, then the, the meal providers provide them an alternative meal. And oftentimes, that meal might be a cheese sandwich, or it might be what they call the Crustables, which is the, like a peanut butter jelly sandwich. That is not our practice.
It has been though, when did that change, years ago, Beth?
It is, that is not our practice right now. I did reach out to Harlan, and that is not our practice at this point. However, we will have to look at our policy as it relates to school meals, because right now, our policy states something a little bit different. Now, because this opinion came out on Friday, we did not have a chance to update the board packet, so we will go through this first read this month, and the second read in December. But expect to see our food service policy on the January agenda. This would be a great thing for a mentor to, to kind of research. But yeah, the language in our current policy is, we're going to have to relook at the language. But again, right now, that is not the case for us, but we'll also need to give, give some consideration to, then what?
Right.
Then what? In terms of when families go negative in their meal account, $10, $20, for $50, $100, $200, then what?
Well, that's a broader question.
It is.
Because I understand the intent.
I do too.
Because it's, you know, they're students, and we want to treat them equally, equitably, but also, we don't want to, you know, lose hundreds and hundreds of dollars, so, yeah.
So again, hopefully with that decision just coming up, coming out on Friday, that will get some additional information over the next few weeks. Maybe the state legislature will take it up as a solution. I don't know anything. Kind of just made that up.
We don't have to fix the problem, we just have to...
But yeah, I could see more to come on that issue in general, or maybe even the FDA, because I'm sure we're not the only school district, or, or not school, but state, that is looking at that language in their, in their contracts. In addition, we had a successful opening of our new bus corrals. First couple of days was, were, were a little, just changing the patterns and getting used, getting kids used to entering and exiting our buildings from a different door. I mean, we're all creatures of habit, and so it's just really relearning those, those traffic patterns. But from, from what I'm hearing from the buildings, from the principals, it went relatively well, as well as can be expected, trying to, changing our, our patterns mid-year. Any questions? Other than that...
Actually Brenda, I do have a question from the bus lifts.
Yes, please.
Other than like, the changing the patterns, and you know, just the mental gymnastics, is it working as designed? Like, is it working as they had hoped? For the bus lifts to move the buses to a different section, like, is it working as intended?
Yeah, in terms of loosening up the congestion, especially here in this building, or at this building, and, and at the middle school, or elementary and the high school, I think it is kind of just dividing up the, the bus traffic from, from the parent pickup, from our Northwest Suburban buses and vans, just kind of separating that out, yes, to answer your question. Do you have a question, Beth?
Thank you.
Just a couple of other things, of course, I've continued to, to attend my standing meetings, including the AMSD annual meetings, facility meetings, long-term facility meetings, and then the long-term facility maintenance meetings, Northwest Suburban meetings, attended negotiations for both 284 and the principals. Of course, attended the gala last weekend, and attended a very well-run World's Best Workforce meeting that was held earlier this afternoon, prior to the work session. Teaching and learning, Rob Danicker did a phenomenal job at presenting at that meeting, and had Jim, Joe Ramstead, who was our new ag teacher, present to that group, as well as Mr. Menard and Ms. Lacram. So it was a very well-attended meeting, and a lot of good information, so... Oh, and then just one more item, we had a open enrollment kickoff a week ago, two weeks ago? Week ago, and in talking with our HR director, it was a successful kickoff, and now it's just a matter of finishing up all the open enrollment applications, and making sure that every employee is, goes into the portal, a portal, and, and select new options. So, lot going on in the district.
Thank you, any questions for Superintendent Dean?
I know, Beth is going to get her microphone and meet real quick here. So, from here at the end of that agenda item, our next agenda item is item number 10, which is the adjournment, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a first and a Ms. Johnson, do I have a second? A second from Ms. Praska, I have a first and a second, any further discussion or comment? Any no further discussion or comment, I'll call her, about, in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Carries unanimously, we are adjourned, and the time is 8:47.
Hey you guys, did you see the email about the MSBA conference? Is that clear?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, hope to go this year, last year it didn't.